Evening, everyone. Welcome to the September 5, 2012 Town Council Business Meeting. We will begin, as always, with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic at which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is public forum for non-agenda items only. Mr. Porter.
I was going to get up to talk. Let me talk this way. I was going to get up there to talk.
Sir, if you could please go to the -- so everyone at home can hear.
I was going to talk, but I'm going to avoid the talk because it's delicate situation. We're going to talk now. The next item might be, right? With other issues I was going to bring up, cancel it.
Okay. Thank you.
Rosie and Quox, Wally Falls Road, New Market. I'd like to know this. As you can see, we've got a full house here tonight. A lot of people would like to voice their opinions and concerns regarding the Hydra presentation. We can't speak to it in public because it's an agendted item. Will we be able to discuss it after the presentation? Will we have public comment on it?
There's no public comment on the agenda today, but the public will be allowed to make a comment before there's any vote, any vote from my --
But don't you --
No intention to see a vote without public comment.
Don't you think that on behalf of everybody here concerned about it, the presentations and discussions we'll have tonight, while it's fresh in everybody's mind that it would behoove this town council to listen to the public comment?
I think public comment is crucial. I think we absolutely need to have public comment on this. I think straying from the agenda as is currently written is not going to happen.
So, and will the four councils that participated in the 91A illegal sequential meetings recuse themselves this evening from discussion?
Ms. Quox, I would say that that is a very serious claim.
Yes, I know.
That I think a reading of 91A does not meet out, and I take personal and professional offense, but outside of my own personal and professional offense, I think that those, as someone who understands the RSAs, I think that you're accusing this body, which you have once been a member of, of something that is not only factually incorrect, but against the spirit of the law. So...
And I can tell you that it is not, that it is factually correct, and maybe you should all read 91A a little more thoroughly.
I assure you, I just did.
Yes. Yeah. And I seriously hope you would reconsider letting all the people who bothered to come here tonight speak on this.
I am...
And your remark about before a vote, you mean to say that you're seriously considering having a vote on this to do something?
I have no plans of making any motions on anything. I'm saying that should the council at any point or any time have any form of vote on this, that the public comment needs to be heard first.
It should be heard tonight. Thank you.
Appreciate your input. Name and address.
Bert Allen, 56th Garrison Road, UofM, 42 USC, 1983.
Off the top of my head, I don't have the US Code memorized.
Individual and official capacity?
Uh...
She's just called out a First Amendment violation. That's how that law came into effect. Are you challenging your power over federal supremacy law? Yes or no?
I don't know the law that you're referring to, nor do I have it in front of me, so it's really difficult.
The First Amendment is the right for the public to speak upon matters at forum.
I am well aware of the First Amendment, and I am not challenging the First Amendment. I would never challenge the First Amendment. I absolutely believe everyone has a right. I have been contacted by multiple members of citizens or residents of New Market, as I'm sure every other councillor near has, and those are all exercises of First Amendment right. We absolutely need to have public comment on this, but as I said before, we will have an agenda item for there to be public comment on this.
Phase two of the question. Do you understand, explain official capacity and individual capacity of 42 USCA? Are you understanding of 1983 as being chairman of the board?
I, Mr. Allen, I really do not understand that sentence.
Do you understand First Amendment, individual capacity and official capacity? Which capacity are you in? Please state for the record, are you right now in official capacity or individual capacity?
I would say that any individual on this board is up here right now as a member of an official body. As a person, I'm only one-seventh of this body.
As stated, are you in official capacity or individual capacity?
This, Mr. ...
Are you declaring individual or official capacity on the public's right?
I, Mr. Allen, I do not understand your question, and if we could move on to your next statement, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
The public has a First Amendment right to speak. You are in official capacity. If you move to not let the public speak, you violate federal law. You must be warned before any action shall be taken.
Thank you.
Michael Ricker, Birch Drive. Think it's pretty obvious, or at least it should be to members of the council, you have the public here. This is an agenda item. To not allow these people to speak is outrageous. So you want to set up a time when it's convenient for you to have the public discuss this. I think every member of this public body here tonight should come up, demand speech on this item tonight.
Thanks, sir. Any other public comment? Seeing no other public comment, we'll close public comment at 7:07.
Excuse, can I? My button doesn't work.
Here, hold on a second. Try it now, Gary.
Nope. I actually wanted to just make a quick statement as a point of order if I could.
Go ahead.
But I could. I think in general, when we've had agenda items and we've had discussion on them, the public has, at least since I've been on the council, been able to speak to them, and I think it's pretty outrageous not to let them speak to this after the presentation. I completely disagree with this, and I think you're going down a bad road.
I appreciate your comments for the record.
Good.
Town council consider acceptance of minutes. I'll accept a motion. Are any of these working?
It's a plug-in.
They're just going to do what they want anyways. Doesn't matter what we think.
Councillor Branch.
I'll make a motion to accept as written the minutes for August 15, 2012 workshop.
Second. Seeing none, Mr. Administrator of the vote.
Councillor Levy?
Aye.
Councillor Wright?
Abstain.
Councillor Zaro?
We usually go this way.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councillor Branch?
Aye.
Councillor Zink?
Aye.
Councillor Carmichael?
Aye.
Councillor Bentley?
Aye.
DES, we got hired to develop the protocol for the pilot testing. And what got built is those three tanks on the right side in Woodsville. It was a 65,000 gallon a day pilot study. They got commissioned in the spring of 2008 and ran till sometime mid 2010. Notice what Hydra has recommended is two filters in series. Micromedia and Raymond suggested they only needed two as well. But they said there are situations where they envisioned they might need a third one. So they said, we're going to pile it all three. And we set up data collection before and after each one of the filters to understand what was going on. These were all conventional sand filters, just like they're proposing for you initially. They went online. They instantly had operational problems. They thought maybe it related to the type of sand that was in there. They changed out the sand. Those upgraded media failed again. They finally said, well, let's try some set of sandals, put plastic media in the middle vessel. So it was kind of a trial and error to try to get it to work. And after two years, it never worked. It couldn't meet any of the standards that Raymond would have had and that you will have. So it, and it was studied thoroughly and Micromedia earnestly worked to make this successful. They studied hard at it. We put a lot of energy into it. We tried to understand the biology involved. And it was nothing like they thought it would be prior to going into it. So it didn't work. And it didn't surprise us because that was pretty much what the manufacturers of those filters said would occur and what conventional wisdom would. Micromedia also was able to sell a community in California on building, they had an existing treatment plant. They needed to expand it. And Micromedia convinced them to put in a very large system like Hydra's proposing for you. I think it was 4 million gallons a day of capacity. Mr. Bishop referred to this facility when he presented to you a year ago in 2011. In fact, I think his comments were, come to California and see this facility. Like Mr. Bishop said, it actually did get built and put online this year. It's already failed and it's already been shut down by the state of California. And they've abandoned this concept and are going to conventional treatment technology. So there's two cases where it failed miserably. It didn't come close to achieving the kinds of standards that you have to meet. And understand, the standards that you have to meet for total nitrogen are the most stringent nitrogen standards in the country. These aren't easily met. And so it's not something that you want to, you're going to do with technology that's not like, that's really not trying to and tested. One of the things that hits me is, and I'm getting maybe into too much minutia for wastewater engineers like this discussion, but I'm going to share it with you anyway. Hydra's trying to use these filters for what we would call is a fixed film reactor concept for nitrogen and carbon removal. These filters aren't designed for this application. That said, if they had their hearts set on doing a fixed film treatment process as opposed to what we call a suspended growth system, which is what you have recommended, there are companies that make them that have been doing it for years. And Kruger and IDI are two companies that make fixed film systems to achieve what you have to achieve. Here's a picture of one right up on the right side. They're very space efficient. They use a lot less real estate than conventional treatment technology. And in places where there's not enough real estate, you sometimes are forced into looking at those. Portsmouth's looking at these technologies right now because of the site of how small Pierce Island is. The downside of these technologies, they cost more than conventional technology to build and to operate. So the only place that these are ever looked at is where there's really tight real estate. We've looked at these a number of times in metropolitan areas in Connecticut and New York where we just didn't have the real estate. You know, every square inch of space was tied up with other things. So you can do what they want to do. You can't do it with the technology they're proposing. In addition to my concerns over the treatment concept itself, I have concerns over some of the information they provided you in your, their presentations. To me, it appears a little misleading, a little inaccurate. And again, I haven't had the opportunity to go with it with Mr. Bishop in detail. And I'm sure he will have legitimate comments to my comments, and I'd welcome that. But let me just go through some of the things. In his 2011 presentation, he made the case that there are three plants in Chesapeake Bay area using these filters and Anamox bacteria to achieve nitrogen standards. Unequivocally false. All the plants in Chesapeake Bay using these filters are using them at the end of a conventional BNR treatment plant. None of them are using Anamox bacteria. None of them are using it on primary effluent as he's proposing here. So that's a little bit of a red herring to kind of give his concept a little credibility, credibility that's not warranted on those installations. And in 2011, he said, come to California and see the facility that will be operational in 2012. I just showed you a photo of the Adelano, California that he was speaking of. 2012, his presentation, absolutely no mention of that facility. And when a question was asked about it, he sidestepped it. Again, this facility is in Adalano, California. It did go online. It failed to work. It was shut down. It got a cease and desist order from the California Regional Quality Control Board. I did find it a little curious that this was the cornerstone of his presentation a year ago, and he didn't make any mention that this went online and failed this year. I would think he would have confronted that issue and said, here's why it failed and what I'm going to do different. I didn't hear that. In fact, when he was asked about questions about that, he quickly sidetracked and went to the third bullet and implied, oh, by the way, there's a 27.5 MGD treatment facility in the Netherlands, similar to what Hydra's proposing, that's been operating successfully for 17 years. Another unequivocally false statement, that Netherlands facility is a conventional BNR treatment plant with a D night filter at the end of it, just like you have recommended in your facility study, has nothing like Hydra's proposal. So it doesn't lend any credibility in of itself to Hydra's proposal field. This presentation a few weeks ago, he sidestepped questions about Woodsville and the failure and claimed no connection with that company that did the Woodsville pilot. My only comment to that, Hydra was a sales agent for Micromedia at the time the Woodsville pilot study was done. So he had some knowledge of it. He may not have, he definitely wasn't in the intimate circle of the pilot work, but he knew, he was getting clearly feedback from the company he was representing who was doing the study. He was a sales rep in another part of the country. Other claims, I mean, clearly throughout his presentation, he does a lot of name dropping of major companies like Parkson and Seaman and Blue Water who make these filters to lend credibility to Hydra's concept. Neither Parkson, Siemens, or Blue Water recommending using their filters as suggested by Hydra. None of them think they have a business relationship with Hydra. So these guys want to sell filters and they'd gladly sell them wherever they can make a buck, but they're not recommending they be used in this application. There was clearly in the presentations, an implication that there'll be minimal and no permitting required for the proposed facility. There's likely to be significant permitting required for air, solid waste, and site permits that DES can speak to better than I tonight. They also made the claims, the proposed treatment process will exceed every reuse standard in the world. Again, unlikely. This treatment process isn't going to meet your F1 standards. The EPA is going to issue alone some of the more advanced standards like TOC, total organic carbon, that many jurisdictions have reuse standards. A little hyperbole there. They also made the statement, they're in the business of designing treatment plants and more importantly, creating water and energy utilities. Made that in their presentation a year ago. From all the research we've done, there's no evidence that we can see that Hydra's ever done either a treatment plant design or created a water or energy utility anywhere. So they may have some experience, but it's hidden and hasn't, we haven't seen it. Other issues that we had when we reviewed the treatment plant concept, first, they're talking about, they made the case that they will be able to reuse 100% of the effluent and eliminate the river discharge. And reuse of effluent is gaining popularity, especially if you're in Phoenix or in Florida or Southern California, big driver to do it. Not grounded in reality, how has it portrayed to you as to what they'll be able to do? There's no way they'll be able to use 100% of this effluent with a small industrial park on that neck of the woods. It will take hundreds of acres of land to get rid of all the water that will be generated in this facility. I also found it curious that the economic analysis that shows what the payback is on this, shows revenue from selling this F1, but it has no capital costs to deliver it, to allow reuse to happen. So there's a multimillion dollar expenditure to realize their revenue that they already claim in their model. Another thing that seemed curious to me is they're relocating the treatment plant to the Wilson Farm site. It's unclear why it's necessary to couple the treatment plant with a waste to energy facility. They make the point strongly in his presentations, there are no emissions or discharges from the waste to energy facility. Therefore, it doesn't need a treatment plant. They're going to spend, I think they estimated close to $4 million moving pipes and moving wastewater, pumping it out there and pumping it back. A lot of energy wasted and $4 million worth of pipe work. Besides that, they're going to have to build equalization tanks at this site that you already have available free at the existing site. So even if this were the absolute best treatment concept in the world, it would be a no brainer to build it on your existing site. And if this waste to energy facility needed a sewer connection, you run a small diameter pipe out to it to convey whatever waste it had back to the plant, that would be cheaper. And the third component that he has in his, is this district energy shared system where they recover with a heat pump, heat, latent heat that's in the effluent before it's discharged, and then can make use of that heat, selling it to people. This is commonly done. We did, I think, the first facility like this in the country in the mid 70s as an EPA demonstration project. I think his projections, I think he made the case that it's enough heat to heat and cool 20% of the homes in town. My experience with this is, on a good installation, there's enough heat to heat the treatment plant. So I think he's a little optimistic there. And again, the economic analysis is a little misleading in that he's got revenue from this, but he has none of the capital costs to achieve it. So you can't have it both ways. Either you got both in the costs or neither in the costs. So to wrap up on the treatment plant piece of this, I wouldn't consider this further without having Hydra explain and clarify in detail the two failures of this system that have occurred, what they will do differently in Newmarket. And also, I'd confront them with the inaccurate information they've provided so far. It does seem a little misleading. Talk to me about that, Dale. The other thing, the second thing I would recommend, that they do a year-long pilot study at the Towns plant. They can't get this technology blessed by the state without complying with the pilot study requirements. The logical place to do it is at the Towns plant because that's where they'll get the exact wastewater they'll have to treat. And every wastewater in every community is unique. And it will be a place where your staff can provide the oversight and minimize the costs to Hydra for having to run a pilot study. And they probably could go up to Woodsville where there are all these pilot units just sitting there that could be trucked down here at minimal costs, I would think, and be put in service. And then finally, if I were the town, I would want evidence that EPA and DES have blessed this treatment concept. And I think that will take a pilot study and conclusions that in fact achieved what it ought to be achieved. So enough about the treatment plant. Let's talk about the waste to energy piece. I looked at this, it's a little too much info, too little info to do a detailed review. As the heart of what they're proposing is a pyrolysis process. This is a graphic right off the, out of Hydra's presentation. While there's not enough details to do a detailed review, I had eight concerns in looking at it. Again, the heart of this process is pyrolysis of some form of waste. And in general, pyrolysis of municipal solid waste, the MSW, or refuse derived fuel or sludge, is, there's very little experience with that. It's questionable, questionable commercial viability, and it's been studied at length. And there's been a number of failures. And it's definitely not tried and true technology. If you look at EPA, they would judge this to be fairly innovative and risky at this point. So that's my first concern. The heart of the waste to energy is really a not tried and true process. The second concern I had with what I saw and read is the claim that there will be no emissions and no need for an air permit. And that seems really questionable. The pyrolysis process, just understand what that is. That's like incineration without air. So you're going to heat this stuff up to 1,000 degrees plus or minus. And you will strip all kinds of volatile compounds in the air. There's going to be emissions. It may be treated to high levels, but there will be some form of emissions. There's a sludge dryer. You're going to heat sludge. Go down to Sean's treatment plant and have him give you a five gallon bucket of this stuff and you see what it's like. It's really nasty. You're going to heat it and drive off the moisture. Well, you can believe that's a very odorous airstream. We've done a number of these sludge dryer projects at large scales, and there's excessive levels of air permitting and odor control standards. He may have it in there, but all he's made the reference to, there's no emissions. This doesn't pass a straight face test. He mentions that, you know, you're going to be generating power. You are in effect going to be a power plant, a two megawatt power plant. There's not many power plants in the state that don't have an air permit. So again, I don't think what he said about the, no need for an air permit is, doesn't seem right to me. But again, DES can speak to that better than I. Third concern I had was on nitrogen footprint. At the last council meeting where this was discussed, one of you asked a question about it. And Mr. Bishop artificially dodged the question and answered the question about carbon footprint. Great Bay is overloaded with nitrogen. That's why you're being asked to spend 12 to 18 million dollars to upgrade your wastewater treatment plant. And to put things in perspective, for that 12 to 18 million dollars, you're going to remove about 100 pounds of nitrogen a day. Not a lot. All waste contains some nitrogen. It's, in every organic material, there's nitrogen. They're going to bring in 600,000 pounds of refuge derived fuel a day. That will have thousands of pounds of nitrogen associated with it. Your typical waste to energy facility releases some nitrogen. Their emission free claim's just not likely to be true. The generators alone will produce what we call NOX emissions, NOXs, which is nitrogen to the air. You definitely ought to ask Hydra to give you a detailed nitrogen mass balances to show, okay, how many pounds of nitrogen come in with the waste and where does it go? How much gets leaves with the fuels? How much gets released to the air? How much get released to a liquid stream? There's a very high probability this waste to energy facility would negate all the benefits of your treatment plant upgrade in every other community in Great Bay. Just to put it in perspective, you're spending 12 to 18 million dollars for 100 pounds a day of nitrogen reduction. This could bring in thousands of pounds. And even if only a small fraction of that gets released, you could, you know, negate and drive up your non-point source control that you ultimately forced to deal with. At this point, no information on it. So this is all supposition on me, by me, based on looking at typical waste streams and what happens. But NOX emissions are very common for these sorts of facilities, and they're likely to be very significant. Fourth concern I had with the waste to energy is the type and quantity of waste really is unclear. The presentation made very clear reference to 300 tons a day of refuge derived fuel. Refuge derived fuel is, and they made reference to, this would be processed maybe in Kingston. So you visualize municipal solid waste, the MSW gets delivered to a facility. They screen out metals and glass. They shred what's left, and then they dry it so that there's less moisture. Then they're going to put it in rail cars and bring it to you. So that's what was said in the presentation, 300 tons a day of this refuge derived fuel. Garbage that's been chewed up and dried. The proposal schematic they give you, gave you, which I showed earlier, doesn't say refuge derived fuel. It says municipal solid waste, tires, and construction waste, et cetera. So there's just a little inconsistency. And then the exclusivity agreement and proposal was quite vague. It didn't say 300 tons a day. It said a multi-hundred ton a day and wastes such as. The way I read that exclusivity agreement, which basically says, everything we told you in past presentations and written material is void and is replaced by this agreement, that agreement gives them, based on an engineer's read of a legal document, the ability to bring in an unlimited quantity of an undefined waste. It seems like that ought to be tightened up so you know exactly what they're proposing. And maybe they have clear intentions to make it 300 tons a day of refuge derived fuel. I would think the agreement, which is the governing document, would be very precise in that regard. Fifth concern I had, they give you a cost analysis, which is very compelling, but they ignore some very significant costs. The road to get to the site can't handle the truck traffic. You're going to need rail improvements. You're going to need infrastructure to allow reuse of effluent, infrastructure to allow reuse of the waste heat. There are other things that just ignored totally in their cost analysis. And these are things that will be tens of millions of dollars potentially, not insignificant items. The sixth concern I have, and this is an important one, is the claim of a three and a half year payback. This is what drives the financial viability of this project. They've made the very strong case, a very compelling case, that this is going to produce a ton of money for you and for them. That's what it makes, intrigues our interest about it. And it's, you'd be foolish not to consider this very seriously with the financial case they've made. But the foundation of it is this three and a half year payback. Well, that analysis is based on incomplete cost analysis, like I just showed you. They have a number of major capital costs not included in their estimate. It's inconsistent with EPA's findings. EPA just issued in June of this year, a report on gasification of pyrolysis processes. Their finding is paybacks, if viable at all, are more likely in the 20-year range. Well, that dramatically changes the conclusion of the financial picture if it's a 20-year payback. It's, the three and a half year payback's inconsistent with decades of research by Monsanto and Union Carbide in the 70s and 80s and into the 90s. Those, both of those companies spent tens of millions trying to pilot and get this technology commercially viable. They have pilots, they did a number of major pilot studies. They did extensive research. And you're talking about some pretty high-powered companies with huge resources. Their conclusion, after more than 20 years of research, it's not commercially viable. It's also inconsistent with recent experience in Rialto, California. A very enterprising businessman built a pyrolysis facility in 2008 to process the sludge from a number of the major utilities in Southern California. Like here, it was proposed to be a major energy generator. It was going to be a very green solution to a very difficult sludge biosolids disposal problem. The headlines in the end of 2011 was environmental boondoggle. It consumes more energy than it produces, despite the claims that it would produce a net amount of energy. So it wasn't exactly the same sort of waste, but it's the same process kind of concept, and it hasn't borne out. So there's not a lot of track record with demonstrating financial viability of these processes. The seventh question, concern I had was the sludge dryer. You're going to produce sludge as part of your treatment plant process. Every plant does. They propose to dry that sludge and to make that feedstock for the pyrolysis process that they'll mix with the refuge derived fuel. The one thing that caught my eye, the dryer that they have shown is probably 50 times the size that you need to manage your sludge. Do they envision bringing in sludge from outside town? Or is this the smallest dryer that company makes? Dryers are one of these things that are rarely used on anything other than mega treatment plants, where there's 24/7 production of sludge and you can operate a dryer 24/7. You can't turn a dryer on and off economically. You don't produce enough sludge to start that thing up. So is it a misconception on their part? Or is it reflect they have some other plants? I don't know. And that's a question that I would certainly explore with Mr. Bishop. The eighth concern I have and final concern is the site location. Waste to energy facilities, and we've done a lot of regional disposal facilities of municipal solid waste, sludge disposal facilities, big regional facilities. And the sophisticated waste management companies that have done this for decades, all look facilities in an industrial park off a major highway. They don't want to have to drive through neighborhoods. They don't want to have to have all the aesthetic concerns and bells and whistles that it takes to operate in a sensitive area. Wilson Farm site wouldn't be considered a typical optimum site. Here's the picture of the Haverhill, Mass facility that you can see right off 495, right in an industrial park. And in contrast, to give you, here's one of our clients is the city of Bedford, Maine. They have a waste to energy facility in town. Not optimally located. Done about 20 years ago. It created odor problems, noise problems, traffic problems. It was, they believe adverse impact on their ability to develop the downtown. After a many-year battle, they just successfully shut it down and it cost them over $6 million to do it. So there are consequences of putting something in a bad location. So having it in the right location means a lot. And again, it's usually not something the community worries about. The developer usually is sophisticated enough to know, the more sensitive area I put it in, the more headaches I have down the road and the more money I'm spent to make it aesthetically workable. So that's the big picture on the waste to energy. Just to summarize, before I consider this any further, I'd recommend, yeah, clarification from Hydra on what type of waste they're going to really bring in and the quantity of it. I'd get their, I'd get references for identical pyrolysis facilities they intend to build. Where is this being done anywhere else in the world that you can talk to the people that have it and find out what success? Find out references for similar sized sludge dryers. Have them give you a nitrogen balance on the entire facility to make sure you're not negating $300 million worth of treatment plant work by the Great Bay Coalition communities. Get their emission control plan. Get a refined cost analysis with all the missing pieces included. And get a better understanding of all the impacts this would have on the community, on the neighborhood, on Great Bay, and on the neighboring communities. Your neighboring communities may have something to say about it if you have to bring trucks through their, you know, secondary roads that weren't potentially designed for what they have to carry. So that was the second part. The third part I want to talk about is the business deal itself. They're suggesting a public-private partnership. It's, these are starting to gain popularity. I'd suggest before you became a business partner with Hydra, that you understand more about them. And again, I think they've made a number of introductions to you. You know a little about them, but probably not nearly enough to sign an agreement or become a business partner. I would recommend you have references for all treatment projects they've ever built, for all waste to energy facilities they've built, and understand better their financial capability. These are huge financial undertakings. Not only the $116 million you referenced, which is probably an underestimate, is huge startup costs. Usually these things aren't profitable for three to five years. And there's usual, huge cash flow. And if these things aren't bankrolled, they may never make it out of startup. Being a co-owner, as the town, as Hydra's proposed to Town B, could result in liability exposure for the town. If you're in bed with a businessman and you take on notes of over $100 million and that business fails, you guys are left holding the bag. You definitely want legal review and you got a great attorney who can speak to those issues better than I. Bottom line, Hydra's claims appear too good to be true from my point of view. They got a great sales pitch, but too little verifiable info to support the technical and financial claims. Definitely insufficient info to confirm who Hydra is and whether they have the wherewithal to undertake such a project. I'd suggest the town have a much higher level of assurance before signing any agreements or becoming business partners with Hydra. And probably the best way to do that is to begin with a workshop session where I sit down with my detailed list and say, okay, Dale, push back. Tell me where you agree or disagree, and let's, let's dig below the surface a bit. So far, you've had a superficial presentation by them, and I've just given you almost an equally superficial presentation that they owe, you both, you need to see what's behind my claims and what's behind their claims. So that's pretty much my summary. Oops, going backwards for some reason. So, the end. Thank you.
DES want to say anything before Mr. Brown takes questions? Or is DES, where are they here, in the crowd?
Here's DES.
Oh, right there.
Good evening. I'm Vicki Quaram. I'm an assistant commissioner of DES. And I've just come here tonight to give you DES's perspective on what we've heard so far about the proposed project. Thank you for allowing us to come to this meeting. We appreciate being here. And with me tonight is also Paul Herzler and Ken Kessler from our Water Division, Wayne Wheeler from Waste Management, and Todd Moore from our Air Resources Division. I, I'll give you an overview, and then if you have any questions, we're all here to answer any questions that you might have of us. DES has met with Bob Coffey and Dave Walker of Green Power Management twice to get information on this project. We have not met with Hydro Renewable Resources, so we haven't had a chance to have that back and forth with them about the project. As we understand the project to date, and we don't have a lot of details, there's multiple components that would require permits from DES. For example, both of the solid waste handling facilities that they are talking about, both in Newmarket and what's been mentioned in Kingston, both would require permits from our Waste Management Division. The engines that they talk about that would combust the methane and the pyrolysis process are very likely to need air resources permits. The wastewater treatment and sludge handling will require permits from the Water Division and EPA. And there are other components where the need would have to be determined because we just don't have enough information to determine whether they'd need, what kind of permitting they would need at this time. So based on the limited information and material provided to date, the process proposes, proposed, appears to be on the cutting edge of technology, particularly in the way that they are proposing to use these technologies. DES supports the use of innovative technology. We in fact, provide funding priority for projects that are using innovative technology, and particularly in the wastewater field. So we hate to shut that down. We don't want to shut the kind of innovative thinking that's going on here down. However, based upon the information that we have to date, DES has two principal concerns. The first is the effectiveness of the technology, which you've just heard a wonderful presentation on, and the time that would be necessary for implementation. To address the effectiveness of technology concern, the technique, the technology, as you heard, is just not proven. Our permit process is governed by law and enacted by our legislature. The permit process is intended to protect the environment and public health. It requires- It requires that we hear all of the public's concern and we consider their comments fully before we permit and make decisions on projects like this. In the case of this new technology, we don't know of any similar processes where this operation has been successful, like you just heard, and we've been very disappointed when similar technology to, to the exact same technology, similar projects have failed, like the one in Woodsville. We're also aware of a similar project in California where the, where the project also did not work and the facility had to be closed. We don't want to say that this process couldn't be modified and someday in the future might work. We would hate to go there. However, we would need a whole lot more specific information to consider permitting a facility like this. Because of the rules and the regulations that we follow, it would be imperative that we did a pilot project to prove that the wastewater treatment would work. It would have to be constructed, operated, and thoroughly assessed before construction of a larger plant could be permitted. In addition, that pilot project would have to be designed and operated in a manner to be consistent with the town's NPDS permit, and it could not produce unpermitted discharges to the Great Bay. So it'd be a challenging project, certainly depending on the location, to build. So the second concern that I mentioned was the timeframe. And the timeframe for permitting and developing such a project, this is a big project, is considerably longer than it would take for a conventional wastewater treatment plant. And a conventional wastewater treatment plant can take two to three years. So this would be likely longer than that. We would not want you to be behind the eight ball on any EPA permit effluent limitations that you might be subject to or subject to any of the associated enforcement actions or fines that could occur if, if you don't move ahead with your traditional technology at the same time. Being the first to try out new and innovative things is both exciting, but it's time-consuming. Because you would be working with a technology that hasn't been proven yet, the project proponents would be put in a position of actually having to teach us what they were proposing and prove to us that it works, and that takes time. It results in a longer process for them. At this time, because we don't have the details of the process, we actually cannot confirm that D S would be even able to permit this facility. And we can't precisely tell you what permits are even required or give you an accurate estimate of the timeframe that it would take to permit these. However, it should be expected that the design, public process permitting, and pilot project will be a multi-year process. The construction, operation, and analysis of the effectiveness of the pilot project for this wastewater treatment technology will take time, and a separate solid waste facility would also require extensive permitting. In addition, a project of this magnitude requires significant public involvement. The public process that would ensue when locating the many elements of this project, both in New Market and other communities, must be vibrant, and it would take time. There are some alternatives that might shorten the timeframe, and I'll just give you one example. You could move forward with a conventional wastewater treatment facility that addresses your nutrient removal, such as the facility that's, that's proposed for New Market by Underwood Engineers, and this could be built in place of the unproven technology. This may increase the total project cost of the rest of the project, but the treatment system would work for you. It would also remove the requirement for the pilot testing, and the existing treatment facility site could be used as currently planned. So that is a possibility for you to consider, and it would certainly remove some of the issues associated with the wastewater treatment portion of the project. Please don't take our comments as opposition to bringing innovative approaches to bear on this situation. However, we do want to encourage you to minimize the risk to your community and the environment and keep all of your options open. If you decide to look at hy, at the Hydra alternative, we urge you to keep moving forward with the design and every direction you're going with a proven methodology for the wastewater treatment that you've been pursuing. You're presently in the queue for low-interest loan programs that'll help you finance a proven technology that should satisfy your EPA requirements. You've put a lot of time and money into this effort, and I urge you not to close those doors. If you're inclined to pursue this innovative approach, also keep the traditional approach moving forward so that you don't foreclose any opportunities to solve this problem. D S doesn't want to discourage innovative thinking. We do want to minimize risk for the town, the health of its citizens, and the surrounding environment. Again, we applaud you for your interest in innovative technology, and our interest is to protect the environment, public health, and the community's interest. Thank you for the opportunity to meet with you, and we are pleased to answer your questions. If you have any specific questions on anything I've said, I'm here, as well as the rest of the staff, and we are glad to answer your questions.
Questions for both D S and for Wright Pierce. Counselor Levy.
Okay.
The last time Mr. Bishop was here, he stated the Commissioner was very supportive of this process, and he was keen on the plan. And he was actually pointing to the fact that he was going to talk to those guys at EPA to better understand the process. Is, is that consistent with what you just said with respect to the fact that you haven't met with him?
We have not met with the, anybody from Hydra. Now, we did meet with the two gentlemen that we talked to, and we did tell them that we applauded anybody who was looking at innovative technologies, but we saw, we did see some of the elements that would require some significant permitting, and we had some, some concerns with the project at hand.
Well, you might want to watch that tape.
We did not shut him down completely, I will say.
No, that's not my point. My point is, he said he met with you, so.
And I don't know, has any of the rest of the D S staff met with, just to make sure?
I'm Paul Herzler. I'm with Wastewater Engineering Bureau at D S. This was not the first time that Hydra's come forward with this proposal. They came forward to us, I want to think about a year and a half ago. Mr. Bishop was there, present at the time, and made very similar presentation to what he made to us this year and also made to you on August 15th. They went away to do their homework, and then it was probably a year and a half later that they came back and met with us on August 9th and pretty much gave us the same presentation. I can tell you from first-hand experience, I was in that meeting, Mr. Bishop was not there, there were other members of the consortium, if you will, who were there, and the Commissioner, the Commissioner's posture was one of hope that a system like this could work, but at the same time, you know, we're all skeptical because the details were not present. So, you know, I think there's a balance there that the Commissioner gave the proponents to give them some hope that a system like this could work because, as they suggested, it would be a paradigm shift, and we are interested in innovative technology, especially where it can save communities money and at the same time meet their obligations through their NPDS permits. And we were hopeful that something like this could be shown to work, but until it is shown to work, we are, I think, have to be skeptical, as you are.
Thank you. Counselor Wright.
Another question. The pyrolysis process, there will be emissions. Are there standards out there for this process, or are they using incinerator standards? Or is this getting ahead of the standards that we now have on the books?
Paul, do you want to?
Yeah, Todd Moore, we're in the Air Resources Division, so pyrolysis, gasification, we would have to look at that. There's not nearly enough detail in here to figure out what emissions there might be from there. I think they've, they've mentioned no emissions. Probably what they're thinking is that they're taking all the off-gas from the pyrolysis and running it through the engines, and that's where the emissions are. As Mr. Brown noted, two megawatts of engines would definitely oversize emitting air pollutants that would need review and permits from us, and we would also need to review exactly the, what the pyrolysis unit is and whether or not that also needs air from it. We don't know at this point.
Just to follow up on this, on this, this process here, pyrolysis, is there, it's, it's new, it's innovative. I mean, do you have something on the book where you can say, okay, this is the emissions or anything, and this is the type of treatment we have to use?
Before you answer, could you go to the microphone? Because I want people to probably hear the answers.
Pyrolysis isn't necessarily new, but I'm not aware of any pyrolysis on this scale that's working. Smaller pyrolysis units, I've seen none in New Hampshire. We've had presentation, similar presentations on various types of waste streams, pyrolyzing or gasifying. We haven't had anybody actually come forward with an application to install one. So I don't know a lot about it because I haven't personally reviewed an application, but not aware of anything on, on this scale operating, at least in the United States.
Okay, thank you. Counselors.
Yes, for Mr. Brown? I just, thank you for your presentation. I enjoyed it. Can you give us a little background on your qualifications?
Sure. Let's see, a bachelor's degree in civil environmental engineering from Cornell University, master's degree in the same from Northeastern, 36 years' experience as wastewater engineering and residuals management engineer, President and CEO of Wright Pierce. We're a 175-person firm, eight offices throughout New England. We're doing treatment projects that range from, you know, $10 million like the size of yours up to $100 million regional plants in metropolitan areas like Connecticut. Most of our work's in New England, but we're doing work in other parts of the country and Canada right now. We're doing work in Romania, Kenya, Norway, Poland, South Africa, Australia, a number of places in South America. So pretty extensive experience. This is what we do.
Thank you. Just a quick follow-up. You mentioned, did you mention you didn't think the Wilson property would be big enough for our plant?
I don't, I wasn't a question of size. From my comment really related to, is this an optimum site? And I'm not saying really from the town's perspective as much as from the developers of this facility. Most of the work we've done from the major waste management companies, when they're locating a facility like this, they're trying to pick the least sensitive environmental area because it translates to the least stringent emission standards. They try to put it right off a major highway so that they're not upgrading roads. It just appears to me that this site will result in them having to spend more money than they might otherwise have to, so that's, that was the observation. I, I haven't even looked at the site, and they made the claim that it's a pretty tight footprint, and I believe that's probably the case. So I don't think it's a size issue, it's just, it's just optimum from their cost point of view, their cost model.
Thank you. Thanks a lot.
Vice Chairman. Counselor Levy was referring somewhere, just for the record, I want to make sure, I'm the one who asked the question that night. This is the notes we approved tonight. Council Vice Chairman Van Lee asked Mr. Bishop if he had spoken to the EPA, not D S. Mr. Bishop said he'd spoken to EPA reps, and while they cannot authorize or promote specific companies, he felt they were cheering for him. So let's just make sure the record states what I had asked that night. It wasn't D S, it was EPA, and I don't know if anyone from the EPA can confirm or deny if he's spoken to them, but they're separate entities, so just want to have that in the record. Counselor Z.
Not a question, but comment. I came here tonight with some anticipation of how this would turn out, and I've never heard a more balanced, informative presentation than I've heard tonight. I think everybody that made this happen did the right thing, and that's, that's what it's all about. And I thank you all for not mounting a horse before you could get here. Thank you.
Counselor Levy, I'm going to ask a question first. I do want to echo appreciation for both Wright Pierce and D S taking the time out. I know on a Wednesday evening, there's probably other places you'd rather be than in a hot room in New Market, New Hampshire, but I, we absolutely appreciate your expertise and knowledge in this. It's, as we're trying to do our due diligence as a council to try to ensure that we're doing the right thing by the residents of New Market, your expertise is obviously very much appreciated. The Wilson Farm question, I want to follow up on that. Why would we, would that location have been chosen? Is there any, like, from your perspective, any?
I have no background on what led.
So from a scientific engineering background, there's no?
There's nothing, nothing that I'm in tune with. There may well be good and valid reasons that they, why they picked it, maybe it's because it's available. I, I don't really have any comment on that.
Okay. One quick follow-up or evolution of that question. So just to reiterate what your recommendations were, I just want a reiteration of what your recommendations are, if, if you would. Like, just overarching, what's next steps would you, if you were sitting up here, or you were the town administrator, what would you advise?
I'd bring, I'd bring Mr. Bishop in and have a workshop session with me and go over all the areas that I said, I have heartburn with what you're proposing. Speak to us. Talk to us, let's, let's hash it out. Because like I said before, we've both made presentations, and you've heard the soundbites. You've heard the quarter inch deep. There's a lot behind my statements that I kept you 40, 50 minutes already in my presentation. I could have kept you three days and had to wake everybody up. There's a lot more that could be said, and it probably is not productive, okay, we're going to have another forum, and Mr. Bishop gets up and says, well, Mr. Brown's full of some of the stuff I'm trying to process, and we go back and forth. We, we need a workshop session where we're sitting across from a table. That would be my recommendation. If you're serious and taking this to another level, you got to get answers to the questions I've posed, and I think Mr. Bishop's got to put a little more meat on the bones on his proposal.
Thank you. Counselor Levy.
I have a couple of quick questions, but I don't, and I don't want to debate anybody tonight, but it was actually Counselor Carmichael that asked about the relationship, if he had met with D S.
Say it again. You can't hear.
Sorry about that. No one, no one's ever complained about not hearing me. It was actually Counselor Carmichael who asked if they had met with D S, and it's 8:06 on the tape, if anybody cares to watch it, but that's not my question. I have a couple of questions for Mr. Brown, please. I asked at the last meeting about this product, and if we were doing this garbage recycling or sludge and, to energy, and I was called a demagogue for using that terminology, and then it was clarified there was going to be RFD. I guess my question to you is, after having looked at the, the plan and the size of the, the dryers or whatever they do to eliminate the sludge, et cetera, does that, does that pass muster what, what I was told? Because it, it certainly seems to me that the size, from what you described, is not what would be used at a facility like this, meaning only RFD.
Well, the, the refuse-derived fuel is the municipal solid waste or other waste that has been shredded, processed, and some non-combustible materials removed, so that's kind of modified garbage, if you will. So that's coming per the proposal to the 200 to 300 tons a day. There was some conflicting information as to, with the written word, the proposal and the agreement, whether that was, like I said, the one schematic they presented showed municipal solid waste coming to this facility, but that may have just been a schematic, you know, drafting problem, I don't know. I defer to Mr. Bishop to clarify that. The issue with the sludge, I can't really draw any conclusions as to what their intent is. Clearly, they've got a sludge dryer that they say its capacity, that's way oversized for what you produce for sludge. Do they intend to use the rest of its capacity for something else? I have no knowledge to suggest that. I'm just suggesting that the dryer that they've given the size of is inconsistent with the volume of sludge you're going to produce, and maybe that's simply another typo where the size of the dryer they're quoting is wrong. I don't know. I'd have to get Mr. Bishop to clarify that.
Thank you.
Is that it, Counselor? Vice Chairman Van Lee. Any other counselors?
Yeah, I have a quick, quick thing.
Yeah, Counselor.
I think in the Wilson property, I'm not going to, you know, put words in Mr. Bishop's mouth, but basically, it's situated in the Wilson property because we import a spur line for the railroad, and he said that this will be not brought in by truck, but by railcar.
Yeah, and that may be the driver. I mean, obviously, if you're going to rely on rail, you have to have a site near the rail, and that would make some sense.
Right.
On the, on the flip side, there, that might be an advantage of that site, cheaper rail access. Then another site, the truck access undoubtedly is going to drive some major road improvements and bridge improvements because it's, you're not going to bring tractor trailers hauling 30,000 gallons of fuel a day over that little tiny bridge over the railroad tracks.
Yeah, I guess to follow up on this. Now, he plans to, I guess, in Kingston, have where the pellets could be made, the IDF. From a business perspective or an engineering perspective, it doesn't seem to me to make sense to have one facility in one place to spend charges, the rail charges, the truck charges, to bring it from Kingston to?
I didn't comment on that, but that was another curious point that raised my eyebrows in terms of, if you're going, you're going to go to the extent of processing this municipal solid waste on another site to produce the pellets, why wouldn't you put the waste-to-energy facility right next to it? That would, that's a logical question, particularly where they believe this waste-to-energy facility has no emissions, so it doesn't need a treatment plant. So I would ask that question. I don't, there may be some valid reason, but you're right, there's another big cost driver to load it into railcars. driver to load it into railcars, to get rail siding wherever that's done in Kingston, get a rail siding here, which they said is going to be inside for odor control, that shipping, that handling, the material handling, and some meaningful costs there. Um, it's a good question, but I don't know the answer to it. I'd have to defer to Mr. Bishop. It does seem a little, like, not the least-cost way to achieve what he's trying to achieve, but there may be some driver that I'm not aware of.
All right. One more? One more? All right, this is a good question. And I appreciate all the, you know, the, all the work you've done now. What you know now and the information you've collected, would you consider building these two processes? The water treatment facility, the information you have now, and the waste-to-energy?
Would I? You mean, if I were the town?
If you were the town, if you're sitting, Ray Reim's sitting right now. I don't want to put you on the spot, but you're the engineer.
You know, I, I will tell you, I'm a great engineer, and that's my unbiased opinion. I'm an awful politician, and that's what you guys get paid to do, the big bucks.
Oh, yeah. We're not so good at that either. Public service, maybe.
Thank you for being honest.
You know, I, I probably wouldn't, you know, I...
Appreciate honesty.
We, we've experienced this treatment process, we've probably studied their proposed treatment process more than any other engineer because we managed the, the Woodsville pilot study. We were skeptical prior to the pilot, and the pilot just confirmed that we should have been skeptical, and, and I don't see how it will ever work, to be honest with you, how they're doing it. I have, I haven't seen any sense that there's really any technical backup here, you know, when we first met with Micromedia, they had, the, the guy that, who's this brainchild of, was a very earnest guy, but he wasn't a wastewater guy. He's someone who thought he'd, he'd trip over a new concept that really was going to revolutionize things. It, it really didn't have much real scientific background. Like, these companies that Mr. Bishop's referenced, Siemens, Parks, these are companies who are spending a lot of money doing R and D on things, and they're routinely coming up with new treatment technologies that get tried, and some of them work, some of them don't work. I don't get the sense is that kind of, uh, science machine behind this R and D effort. I think it's kind of the trial and error kind of, so I would be more than nervous. Um, the, the waste-to-energy piece, I, just not enough facts to, to make a good judgment. Um, and, and the same thing about doing business with Mr. Bishop. If I were going to build a house, the first thing I'd, in a hire contract, the first thing I'd say is, "Show me where you built a house before, and if you can't show me, I probably won't hire you." I don't know what he's done before, and, and I'm not saying he hasn't. It just, I even don't have any evidence that he's done anything like this before. So, you know, undertaking a hundred-plus-million-dollar project as a developer, as a middleman, well, you know, that's not something you do lightly. You know, if you've ever built a house, you know, and you try to estimate everything you're going to do, I mean, these are complicated things, and to get it so that it's going to work perfectly, I'd be skeptical, but, you know, in all fairness to Mr. Bishop, I, he needs to be able to respond to what I've put on the table so far, and he may have some great explanations that raises my comfort level. My comfort level right now is insignificant.
Okay, thank you. Um, Vice Chair Bentley.
Mr. Brown, thanks for your time and your informative packet and presentation. In all fairness to us up here, I wrote down a quote you said, and you said you would be foolish not to give this serious consideration, and you still stand by that.
Absolutely. I mean, how could, you guys have, among many other responsibilities, a financial responsibility for this town. There's not a town in New Hampshire that isn't struggling financially. So, if a developer comes with this kind of proposal, promising the kind of financial returns, who wouldn't look at it? I think you guys are doing the right thing looking at it. I think you're doing the right thing commissioning some due diligence. I mean, this part of a process like this, right? So, would I have discounted this out of hand? Absolutely not. I, I think it deserves a process, and looks like you're doing, going through it.
Thank you, sir. Um, a comment that I know Counsel Levy has laid on as well, or what, two questions, two questions. Kingston, I know that the town administrators had conversations with the town of Kingston. I know they're very much in the beginning of any sort of conversation about this. The permitting timeline for something like what is being proposed in Kingston, what does that look like from DES perspective? Because timeline is something that's important right now.
I think a brand-new solid waste facility, just exactly like what you were talking about, a wastewater treatment plant, by the time they get through the design, you're looking at probably six months. You're probably, again, talking about, um, permitting. I would say, I would say two years. We would be looking at probably two years minimum on that also.
Okay. Um, and I guess my last question for Wright, for Wright Pierce, is, Mr. William.
It goes off, goes off of Counsel Wright.
No relationship.
Yeah, no, not at all. You said that if you were, like, if you were up here, you would certainly not move forward in this on what you know right now. Earlier, when I asked, "What should our next steps be?", you said, "A workshop between the two." I just wanted, do you think it is worth our time? Because I don't want to waste the time or...
I would defer to Mr. Bishop. I, I would say, "Hey, we had an independent review. Here's his presentation. He's, he's made some, um, drawn some conclusions that tell us you had a lot of homework to get, gain, gain credibility with us, yeah, for the challenge. Do you want to meet with Mr. Brown in a town meeting, you know, workshop session?" And I'd put it to him. You know, I, if, if he doesn't want to, uh, and, you know, he, he doesn't feel like he can rise above these challenges, well, then that tells you something right there. But I would, I mean, like I said to Counselors Zink, when we were chatting before the meeting, unfortunately, I haven't had the benefit of a one-on-one dialogue with Mr. Bishop. So, I've reviewed what's provided, and what's been provided to you guys so far is relatively skinny. I've made my best professional judgments on what I've seen. I'm very comfortable with what I said. But that said, in a perfect world, he'd have a chance to, to go through every one of my points and say, "Yeah, right, but, consider this, consider that," and that may influence me in some way. Do I think I will become a believer that you can go forward with this right off? No. I think, this needs to be piloted in a very big way. There seemed to be great resistance on his part when that was suggested in the prior meetings that I saw the video of. He didn't share with you the experiences in Woodsville and Adelano, California, but he obviously knows about them. So, he's got to be a bit apprehensive that he had, that he can make something work, and to be curious to see what he has to say, what he will do different to make it work. So, I, again, I, I would put it in his court to say, "If we want to look at this anymore, you got to come back at us and, and sit down with Mr. Brown and have a workshop session and, and hash it out, and maybe we'll come back and we'll be, I'll be investing in this, who knows?" But I suspect not.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Levy.
Uh, just a, a question or a statement and a, um, comment. Just very briefly, some of the comments that they made, and it's sort of off of what Chairman Mazzaro just asked you. You know, we were told at Kingston they had a preliminary agreement. You know, I called all the selectmen in Kingston. There's, there's no preliminary agreement. Um, I asked him about Woodsville. He said there was no affiliation. Um, and then I asked about Chesapeake Bay, you know, and when I, when I asked about, you know, the UZs at the end of, um, the stream, and I just wanted to verify what you're telling us, um, because I was very clear when I asked him about this technology working. And he said it's been working for seven, I think, pretty good with memory, seventeen years, in, um, I think it was in...
The Netherlands.
Yes, excuse me, the Netherlands and, uh, similar product in Chesapeake Bay. There's no question in your mind that neither one of those entities is using this technology in and of itself to treat the water without a, a conventional plant?
They're not using it in anything in the configuration he's proposing. They're using it in the configuration that's already in your recommended facility plan concept, where it's a post, end-of-the-pipe treatment to polish, to do a little more treatment.
Yeah, and the reason I mention that is because I specifically said that at the last meeting, and I was told that I was, I think the word was, um, utterly or desperately wrong. So, for, for the record, I'd just like to let, let people know that I'm not always desperately wrong. Um, that, that aside...
You're desperate, right?
Yeah. Some days here. Um, my, my, I'd like to thank, by the way, everybody for coming tonight. I really appreciate that. I just have a quick comment. And, um, three state senators took the time to come, Senator Stiles, Prescott, and Jeb Bradley, and I'd like to thank them for taking the time because, um, they've sort of heard about this through the grapevine, and it was very nice of them to take the time. I thought they were going to have an opportunity to speak, and at least from my standpoint, I apologize for that. Thank you.
Can we have them speak?
The three.
I'll gladly have the state's senators come speak if they want to come.
Yeah, I'd like to hear what they have to say.
Well, I'll start. I'm Senator Nancy Stiles, Senator for District Twenty-four, and I had great concerns because I represent Portsmouth, Newington, and Greenland, and I had great concerns about the bay. So, that's why I've been trying to stay in tune with what you're doing. I still have concerns. I would like to express that. So, I would ask you to move forward cautiously. Thank you.
Uh, thank you very much, Chairman Mazzaro, and Counsel Levy and other counselors, Jeb Bradley from Wolfboro. Uh, I was approached by proponents of the project because of the one thing that really hasn't been discussed very much tonight, the so-called private-public partnership and how that would work. The question, and I don't know the answer to this question, do state RSAs authorize the type of legal structure that is being contemplated here? When I met with the gentlemen involved, I suggested that they talk to an attorney from the Municipal Association and try to answer that before there was ever any thought of legislation. They gave me a very brief description of the technology, left me with the impression that it was the best thing since sliced bread, and as you heard from Mr. Wright, sometimes when things sound too be, good to be true, they generally aren't. I probably should have asked more questions because then my phone started ringing from residents of New Market because it was portrayed that I was in support of the project. And so, let me just state categorically, certainly, given the information I've heard tonight and what I've heard previously, there's no way that I could support this project or participate in any legislative endeavor to create this kind of public-private partnership specific to this project until every base is touched, and quite frankly, from my perspective, being from the lakes region and not the seacoast, until there was almost unanimous support on behalf of the town of New Market that this was something that you wanted to do. So, I just wanted to make sure to clarify any misconceptions that people might have about any possible involvement that I would have. There won't be any. Thank you.
Thank you very much for letting me speak. Uh, as you know, usually when I come here, I just talk about the things we're doing in Concord. This time, I'm here because I am concerned about what could happen to New Market, and as, as your senator, I want what's best for New Market. I came to learn, and I also wanted to bring not only the fact that I want what's best for my district as your representative in the Senate, I also want what's best for my community because I'm a professional engineer. As a professional engineer, I take responsibility for all the designs I do, and they result in, either they work or they don't work. Mine work. I keep my license, and I have a vested responsibility to keep my license, and I do a good job. I think that was one thing that was missing in the, in the presentation from Hydra. There is no skin in the game, it seems to be, with losing a license like, like I have to make sure that my business is successful, and I have thirty-eight employees, and make sure that my employees have a job. I think that that means a lot. If you're going to, if you're going to move forward, again, use a licensed professional engineering firm to either validate the Hydra scheme or find out that it's not as good as, as it's portrayed to be. So, it's just two ways I'm coming to this discussion, uh, one, do the best for my community as a senator, but also just to give you that insight. As a professional engineer, I know I would be very skeptical about a, a new sequence of operations of, uh, treatment equipment. So, thank you so much for letting me talk, and appreciate it very much. Take care.
Thank you all.
Counsel Ray.
Yeah, I just, maybe I'm, Sean, would you like to say anything? I see you've been sitting here for a long time, and also, would you like any comment? Because I know, Sean, you've been listening to the process, and it seems like you haven't had an opportunity to say anything.
Well, um, no, I...
To the public, or...
I, I think the bottom line is, is it's great that the town looks at everything. It, it's important that we look at everything, because if you don't look at everything, you're probably going to miss something. So, and I'm very much in looking outside the box. I'm, I'm very in favor of looking at new treatment. I was excited when they first came to me, and so I've been following this for, I want to say, at least two years now. Um, and I've come up with a lot of the same things that, um, that Mr. Brown from Wright Pierce has come up with. Um, I've been following it extensively with Steve Clifton from Wright Pierce. I've contacted the operators out and, and had lengthy discussions and emails with Eldento and with Woodsville. I also, um, have followed up with the Anamox bacteria. Steve Clifton, on, on my behalf, sent Anamox PAC, who represents Anamox bacteria, which is supposed to be their key component that's going to remove the nitrogen, sent our influent characteristics that we see every day at the wastewater treatment plant to the company, and they sent back to us that your, your influent characteristics are not right for the Anamox. The Anamox go, you should do some other process. Also, through, we, Steve contacted, and I have emails from Dr. Cliff Randall and from Dr. Bernard, which are two, um, major people in the wastewater industry. Dr. Randall has worked all over the world on biological nutrient removal for phosphorus and nitrogen. He's the go-to guy, and they both say that Anamox is not the, not the right, um, driver for our process. So, um, I have looked at it extensively. I do have a lot of concerns, but again, I like to look at everything. So, so on the wastewater side, that's the only piece I can speak to. That's, I don't, the waste energy, but yes, I do have a lot of concerns with the, with the wastewater portion.
Okay, thank you. Counselors, where do you want to go from here? It seems to me that there, there are two potential courses of action. We just absolutely stop at this point right now. I would let, uh, town administrator have Wright Pierce ask their questions of Hydra and, and let them have a conversation. Don't everyone jump at once. Counselor Levy, be Counsel Zink by a hair.
Let them go.
Counsel Zink, go.
I have to go with the, uh, the, and, um, that is, let, um, give Mr. Bishop the opportunity to respond. Um, if he chooses not to respond, I think it is telling. If, on the other hand, um, I know he's put a lot of time into this, and to just slam the door without the opportunity for him to respond, I think is unprofessional. Um, I think it should be done, and, and I don't see there being created this, this war. I mean, it's, it's a scientific discussion. I, I'm not a scientist, but I, I think I'd enjoy listening to it, just to, and I think it'll, I think the rest of us here will sort it out as we listen to it, and it will either bring true or, or not.
Thank you. Counsel Levy.
Um, that's fine with me. You know, I don't have a problem with that. I, the, the things that I, I just think should be known are, you know, Portsmouth spent one and a half million evaluating a bunch of different plants. I spoke with Peter Rice about it, and, um, you know, we were told that we were this great fit, and I, I think it's important for people to know that, um, there are several New Hampshire towns all around us that were pitched the same, um, proposal or, or very similar to it, and they all, uh, walked away from it. So, it was a little bit deceiving to make it sound like, you know, New Market was, you know, the one he had hand-selected, and, um, the other thing that bothers me, and I'll leave it at this, is all the statements, forgetting whether the Chesapeake Bay is arisen or this or that. You know, when people make comments about having preliminary agreements and whatnot, it, it bothers me that there were so many, um, very misleading statements, and I think I'm being generous there. Thank you.
Vice Chair Bentley, then town administrator.
I agree with, uh, Counsel Levy and Counsel Zink that, um, I think Mr. Bishop has the right to, uh, address it. I would push for, you know, right now, we're eighteen people of a capacity for what the capacity is of this run. So, I would say that maybe we try to set it up downstairs. There's a lot of people that are here to talk, and maybe going forward, and there's people for it, too. There's some people that emailed me today that are here, um, in support of finding out more, so it's not just one side. Let's make that clear, too, but I think we should do it downstairs where there's more room and where people can, uh, have a chance to ask questions of both groups, maybe.
I, uh, real quickly, before the town administrator goes, eight, nine... Real quickly, before the town administrator goes, eight, nine factual inaccuracies that Wright Pierce pointed out in the statements, that, to me, is probably more concerning than anything else, that if there are factual inaccuracies, not just factual inaccuracies, but like attempts to like move around statements, that I personally, it may not be questions of science, but if a conversation is going to happen between the two, that's the direction of the council size ahead, I would want these specifically answered, as to why exactly that was the conversation, the way the conversation is.
Yeah, just on that point, you know, I'm the one that asked about the nitrogen footprint, as you recall, and I, you know, I heard about, you know, a whole different issue with carbon credits, and I didn't address it because I just wanted him to go on, but it was, I think credibility is huge, and there isn't much credibility. They have no customers, and there's just so many things that were not accurate in statements that it's very bothersome to me. So I'll leave it at that.
Mr. Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you know, this is my first meeting, so I'm not sure if stepping over the line or anything, but I started this process, getting involved in this discussion, I think actually prior to my official appointment. It was right after my announcement, when I received the first information, and then I received a number of phone calls and had a number of meetings up until this date. I don't know all the technological side of it. I know the bureaucratic side, and I think there's a lot of issues still there that I would not recommend at this point in time, which sounds like the council's looking to have a joint meeting, signing any documents until we have a lot of other things answered, not just the technology. We need to see what our liability is in any agreement that we sign. We need to make sure that what happens after the 20 years, when the plant is turned back over to the town? I mean, what happens if during that time, something happens to the company? Who's at risk there? What kind of risks does the town have? And I think those are the other questions that we need to be looking at in conjunction with our council and hopefully their legal council, to make sure we have the best agreement possible that protects the town. I mean, if this is a be-all, end-all, then my number one thing is if it's a great private partner, private entity, the town may not need to be involved except to provide them with sludge, which I believe we would be happy to give, because we don't want it.[1651.83][1651.83](Laughter). But I think that we just need to make sure that we protect the town, number one. That is my, and that's my number one job, and that's my job to recommend to the council, is that we need to make sure that we have all the documents in place, and we don't move too fast, and we make sure we do due diligence, which I believe the council is doing, to make sure we are protected at the end. That's all I have to say.
Counsel Zink.
One last comment. I think we've got to make sure that this doesn't become a focus of the council for the next two months.
Yeah.
We've got so many other things to do. I would just recommend we do it swiftly and not ponder for weeks and weeks and weeks on this. I think the public will let us know after that meeting if it's decided that it should be held, whether there's credibility or not, and I think that should give us a message to move on to important goals that we have for this year.
Good point. Counsel Wright.
Yeah, I think it's important we move on, have discussions, and it's so important to get the public to hear their opinions and questions. The other thing, we have right here before me, other town council members have it, it's a, I guess you call it business proposal?
Yeah.
And it's my confidential copy.
There's one on the website.
Oh, there's, oh, great.
It's on the website.
And, you know, okay. And Al, you know...
It's not that confidential.
Yeah. But, Al, you know, I can understand moving quickly, but you know what? If, it has to be done right. You know, I see your concern, but I just don't want to, this is such a big project. This is such a game-changer for Newmarket. You know, it's $117, $120 million investment. We're 25 percent partners. You know, it'd be great if we could say we do this in, you know, a month, but, you know, whatever it takes, I think it's whatever it takes. But I understand your concern.
I agree.
You know, I'm not dragging this on until...
I think the concern is not letting us focus on anything else, that this becomes the only thing we focus on.
Absolutely, yeah.
Counsel, Vice Chair Bentley.
Let's just ask for a brief recess before we go to the next thing.
Brief recess, okay. Any other comments on this? Counsel will take a five-minute recess. We will reconvene at 8:40.